Good evening, everybody. Good evening. You're good. I thought I might have to play like a camp game and say, you can hear me clap once. But no, good to be with you. Thank you for coming out on this sultry summer evening and for your interest in the process and where we're at in the process to call an associate pastor here at Augustana. It's an exciting time and so thankful for your presence and we'll provide some background and some information tonight. We'll hear from Doug Berg Williams, our chair of the call committee. We'll hear from our bishop, Pastor Shalal. Thank you for being with us tonight. And we'll ask him some conversation, take your questions and hopefully we'll have some answers for you. That'll be kind of the extent of our evening and hopefully you'll walk out of here with a better sense of what kind of skills and gifts we're looking for, kind of where we're at in the life of our ministry together. Many of you, if not all of you, participated in one of the listening sessions this spring, so some of this information might sound a bit familiar. So before we get started, let's begin with a word of prayer. "Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for the gift of your church and the ways in which you call us to be your people and to carry your good news into the world. We pray for and give thanks for pastors and leaders. And in this time, as we discern who it is you are calling to serve along with us next, we ask your spirit to guide us and to bless us, to fill us with confidence that you are at work in this process and leading us through it. Be with us tonight in this conversation and bless us with wisdom and insight. In Jesus' name we pray."
Amen.
So I want to start tonight. We will talk about two particular things. You know probably, you're very familiar at this point with the ministry site profile, which was created in the process to call me as your senior pastor. And thanks to the good work of that call committee in which both Lori, who was the chair of that committee, Scott is the chair of the congregation, were part of that. And because that was done so recently, we were able to really use that as a framework for this call process too. So we're able to kind of jump into this process and start at like step seven rather than step one because we've had the fortune of kind of building on that process. Because this is an associate position and associate pastors can look and sound like all kinds of different things, we have put together an actual job description that provides, I think, a better or stronger framework for what we're actually looking for and the gifts and the skills we're looking for. And a lot of this job description really comes out of what many of you shared in those listening sessions this spring. I wanted to share a couple of points from that, from the takeaways. There are about six major takeaways that came out of that. And the number one thing that came out was in every single one of those listening sessions, the nine, I think, that I hosted, everyone, or at least some people in every one of those, talked about a deep interest in engaging younger generations in the life of our congregation, right? And so you'll see that reflected in the job description. There was also broad support for new ideas while also maintaining gratitude for just the strong ministry that has been done in this place for so many years, right? So especially coming out of COVID, many people said, you know, "We know where we've been. We're grateful for where we've been. We know it's a different day and we're ready to go. Don't hesitate. Let's go." And so that was stated across each of those as well. People evaluate the relationships they have developed, the way in which there was conversation here tonight. I think is evidence of just the deep relationships that have formed among many of you over the years that you've been here. That's something we want to continue and it's something we have to be really intentional about cultivating for new people and for new generations, right? We know it's a strength for those who have been here. We want it to be a strength for those who are coming now. Obviously, quality of worship and music is central to who we are. And one of the things that I noticed as I looked across all of the data is as we talked about kind of what our core mission or purpose or identity is, that is where it got a little fuzzy. That we know that we're really good at giving. We really love global mission. But no one articulated exactly what our stated mission statement is. And so there's some areas of work. There's lots of comments about our community mission partners, but we couldn't really figure out like, what does that exactly mean? So you'll see some of that reflected in this job description too. And finally, there were several requests and questions, conversations about how we do ministry in a 21st century digital age and what kinds of attention are we going to give to that? And obviously, we've talked about that. So I have like, I think I have 20 copies of the job description and we'll just, I'll just give a few of these. So the first thing you may notice about the job description as it's coming around is that we are not just calling an associate pastor. We're looking for a pastor of discipleship and community mission. And a couple of purposes for being specific about that. One, I think it reflects where we need to be as a congregation and how churches need to attend to faith formation in today's world. The systems that we have created over the last hundred years to do church and to raise up kids and young people in faith seem to be broken. And we've kind of, we're at a state where we don't quite know exactly what works anymore. Families, systems have changed. The society has changed. And so discipleship is an intentional process of how we follow Jesus, right? And so hence the discipleship, community mission. We have deep, deep commitments. Twenty percent of our budget goes to community mission partners. Ten percent of that to the synod, another 10% of that to community partners. And so that's not only a lot of resources, financial resources, but it provides us an opportunity to think about how it is that we actually engage in ministry and the work that God is doing in those organizations as partners. And so a couple of caveats about why the specific title. You'll see the purpose of the position to serve as a catalyst for innovation and leadership in the areas of Christian discipleship for all ages and mission and community engagement. Its purpose is to lead the people of Augustana into deeper expressions of faith in Christ and service to our neighbors so that we and our communities are transformed by the power of the Spirit. Just trying to be really clear so that when candidates see, "What is it I'm called to do?" Here it is. This is, I don't know that this is so much measurable, but it is far more specific than a lot of pastoral job descriptions, right? And then getting into those areas of responsibility, you may wonder, okay, if this pastor is going to do these two really specific things, what about all the pastor things, right? They're there and they have to be there, right? Pastors are called to a word in sacrament primarily. So preaching and worship leadership, innovation, not innovation, but just creativity and attention to worship, both liturgically and contemporary, I think, are some gifts, skills we're looking for. Provide pastoral leadership and theological content for online worship and digital ministry. That's something that we have done. We took a little hiatus this summer. August 4th, we'll bring something back on. So there's going to be pieces of that that we're looking for, theological depth and some technical know-how perhaps. Provide pastoral care and counseling, visitation to members of the congregation, all ages, you know. This pastor might do more pastoral care to families, certainly, because we all have needs, right? But certainly, they're going to do home baba visits. They'll do weddings and baptisms and funerals, things like that. And facilitate classes that relate to those pastoral acts. And then the program leadership pieces are kind of as I've talked about. So that's the job description. As we've talked as a call committee and thought about kind of the breadth of this role, we're probably looking at someone who's maybe not fresh out of seminary, fresh from college, right? Because this pastor will oversee three to four staff people and need to have some leadership skills and maybe some experience in other work that might provide them some of that background. We hope, we don't know. Who knows? You know, the Spirit's still at work in all of this. But so probably looking at someone with maybe three to seven years' experience, four to nine years' experience. I think that's what the MSP says, the Ministry Site Profile. But the mission does what we're looking for. She's on it. So questions about that? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Doug, who I forgot to have us introduce our committee. So let's do that and then we can get into the other things.
Should I walk over to the camera?
Come on over to the camera.
I'm Doug Bert Williams. I'm the chair of this committee. What's that?
Are you Mike?
I am Mike.
For that.
On our committee, we have Jenny Sanford, we have Luke Reising, we have Mary Yapley. Not here tonight, we have Nancy Quarant and April Semick and Chris Blake, could not be here tonight. So we are the committee and we've met several times now and we're, we put the call out for nominations from within the congregation to see if anybody knows somebody who fits this job description. And I'm not sure we've had any takers on that yet, anybody willing to nominate somebody. But those people will be considered seriously if anybody knows of anybody who's looking for a job. We've been honing our questions for the interview process. The synod has a list of about 70 questions. That's way too many to do in one interview. So we're trying to figure out what we want to ask and we're going to ask everybody the same questions. Our first round of interviews will be probably online or virtual, but we'll do them all virtual to make sure it's a level playing field. And then we'll call some people after that and hopefully come up with a name. Okay, any questions on that? All right, next up we have, what is next?
Yeah, question.
Yes.
Is the MSP coming out?
We are about to submit it. We've tweaked some things, changed some things to fit this call. And we're making some final edits on it. I think, once we submit that, that's when we can first see some candidates. So I think that's pretty soon, week or two?
We'll submit it this week.
Yeah. And then will that be published on the website as well for people to see?
Well, that's up to us. So we can determine if that's something that, there will be, there are copies available. If you want to look at the MSP after our meeting tonight, there are copies available. You can take a look at what we're saying about our church here.
Yeah, one of the things that we worried about as a group with this job description was it seems like a very specific, superhuman person that we're looking for for this job. And I was kind of worried we were going to scare people away from this because it seems like we're asking for a lot. But we're really just asking for a well-rounded pastor who has a strong interest in innovation, child and family education, and just be a pastor and do those things. And the digital content as well.
Jason, I think you said about seven years' experience perhaps, or something like that?
Four to nine, I think is what we clicked on the Ministry Site Profile.
I'm just wondering what kind of experience?
Well, we talked that it could be a second career person who has other experiences, you know, as a teacher or a first career. And then they went to seminary after that. A lot of our interns were that way. They did something else first before entering ministry. So we would consider somebody like that who has less pastoral experience, but other life experience.
Otherwise, the kind of the years, I'd be, we're really looking for probably a second call pastor. You know, someone who's had established their pastoral identity, kind of figured out the basics, you know, and who have gifts and interests in ministry beyond, you know, maybe being a solo pastor or maybe they've been an associate in a smaller congregation and are looking for more experience or a different kind of call.
I was just thinking in my own mind, I mean, you've got digital stuff and you've got community outreach stuff. Does that suggest maybe somebody not in the current ministry but would like to get into it? A bounce back?
Yeah, I mean, whatever the Spirit might call us to.
Any other questions? Am I supposed to be covering something else?
Do I share just some of the like the top 10, top five, top 10?
Yeah, in the Ministry Site Profile, there's kind of this area of the top five ministry tasks that this person would be called upon to do here. And we kind of came up with a list here. The communications and media portion of it, we, you know, we're about to get all this new tech equipment for live streaming services and things like that. And we want somebody who's gung-ho on that and really wants to embrace that. The second point on that is the innovation and creativity. We're just looking for somebody who can come up with new ways to do things, new ways to work with the children and the youth. And I mean, we've done a good job with all this in the past, but we're just entering a new era here. We want to try some new things. Third thing was building a sense of community. We talked about our outreach in the community, or 20% of our budget goes to that. And we would like to get to know our neighbors better and be more involved in the community and grow the congregation from the community. And then the last two points in that are just the children's ministry and the youth and family ministry. When we first came here 20 years ago, I thought we had a great children and family ministry. And Sue and I don't have any kids, but I thought it was just impressive at what was going on here. And then the pandemic hit a couple of years ago and it just, it feels like things have fizzled away on that. And I don't have an inside picture of that, of what it's really like in that ministry, but I feel like we already built that and the group thought that too. So those are the top five ministry tasks for this new pastor. And then we have a list of the 10 essential gifts. There's actually five essential gifts and five hopeful gifts for ministry. This gets a little redundant. You know, be effective in working with children, lead efforts to engage the younger generation in worship life. So maybe in our interviews, we will discover somebody has all sorts of great ideas on how to do that and that's what we'll be looking for. We want them to be effective in working with the youth. They should be effective communicator just to do all of the preaching and the education and community outreach. That's what we expect from a pastor. We want them to be skilled in planning and leading programs, starting new programs, allowing our lay leaders to do what they've done so well over the years and run those programs, but help develop new programs. Provide care and nurture. We want to maintain our pastoral care in some of our senior ministries. We're not subtracting anything from what we want this new pastor to do. And you know, the technology and the media comes up again and again. We saw what we needed during the pandemic and we're poised to make those changes. Any question on that list of characteristics that we're looking for? Lori first.
I do. So it just makes me, well, first of all, thank you, committee, for your work on all of this. The only thing I think about is, from being on the call process to call Pastor Jason, one of the big things from the congregation was worship and preaching. We just, that was like one of the highest expectations that is, that's the heart of our congregation at Augustana. And so, and I don't hear that that preaching is really, you know, top of mind on the list that you just read. So I'm wondering, as a committee, have you had real discussions about that? And is preaching a priority? Just thoughts on this.
You want to take that? Mary, you want to jump in first?
Yes. Lori and I have had this discussion, so I've had a little time to prepare. But yes, preaching has been discussed. And preaching the gospel and the word and pastoral care were discussed as a priority. This MSP, we view as the tool that the candidate looks at to see what the congregation is looking for. And there may be a way that that can be communicated in the job interview as well. But the world has also changed in how you can observe and listen to someone's experience and ability to preach. Their sermons are available online. They're often available to see when they were videoed. And so that will be something that the call committee will be looking at. But if someone's been in ministry four to seven years or longer, they've been preaching for a while and they maybe think they're pretty good at it, that doesn't mean that's what we will find when we look. And I think there may be some places we could beef it up in the MSP and bring some attention to that. But it is something we had quite a lot of discussion of about and that this is certainly an expectation of the role. It is not just youth and family ministry. It's an expectation of the role. But wanted the focus of this job description. So I don't know if that gets at your question, but I think our call committee can revisit it. And it's helpful to know that it rose to such a level with the previous senior pastor position. But it's hard to make everything you do in the discussion show up on boxes that are ticked. And still, and I'm also trying to give voice to Chris Blake, who is not here, who would be rallying for, "We need to get the kids back here." And all the preaching in the world isn't going to get the kids back here. So that was some of the reason those boxes were ticked.
I think the other, just one logistical thing is that I've been in this game a while. I've been through the call process three, four times. Well, three times to be called. I've been interviewed other places. Every pastor thinks they're a great preacher and every church wants a great preacher. We just kind of know that. So by not checking that box, it allowed us to be a little bit more clear about the other things and we can talk about the kind of unwritten expectation, literally the unwritten expectation. But I also think that our bishop will be a very good ally for us in clarifying the culture of this place and our history and knowing that people know of Augustana. And so preaching is certainly is central, but it allows us to...
I think one of the things that we did, we spent a lot of time just listening to sermons on our own. And it quickly became evident of the candidates we had. One in particular was not a particularly gifted preacher. And it wasn't that you saw it in one sermon. By the time you listen to three, four, or five sermons, those patterns kind of evolved. And so, you know, you end up with, if they're outstanding in every other category and their preaching is not as strong, then we have a senior pastor who's very good at training. I mean, it's a, you can get a lot of information just by going online and listening to sermons.
And we will be doing that once we have candidates.
I joked with the call committee that once my name was public, I saw that the number of people who started watching Zemros went up 10%. It's not just because I'm preaching. I said, "Why are they, oh, I bet people are watching."
Ask him about his test driving a car sometime.
Yeah, yeah. Scott must have gone back to the archives because he told me about, he's like, "I love that story you told about test driving a car." And I was like, "Test driving a car? Damn, we don't keep every sermon just like ready for the call." But yeah, so, yeah, and we'll go just as deep. Other questions? Bishop Law, do you, would you, do you have wisdom for us?
I don't ever want to miss a chance to speak.
Can I give you this?
Yep.
Here.
Oh, friends at home. Let me stand right here. That's right here. It is great to be with you. I want to first say I've been recruiting for you. Members, not, not the call process. Friends moved down this way and they said, "Where should we go to church?" I'm not going to rant them out just yet, but I said, "You go to Augustana." So I like what I see and I experience when I'm with you. So thank you for being in Augustana and you're leaning into a new future, which you knew was coming. You knew this was going to be a two-part call process and I'm glad we're in part two. I want to say a couple of things. Doug, I now know it's July. I know I'm going to see you in August.
Yes.
I sent an email making it sound like yesterday I would have had the names. Put in the word July when I met August. A couple of things are going to happen and Doug will come back up and tell you exactly the timeline because as you can see and he knows, you have to be careful with months when I'm talking. But there's going to be a time quite soon for all of you to lift up names.
We're in the midst of...
Okay, so that's going on and is that filling up? Have you peeked at the box yet?
Last I heard, we haven't had any.
What? You get to work. You know people. And the Synod Mobility Team, the three assistants and myself, we have also, we've been in prayer for a long time, but we are beginning to generate a list as well. And it really helps to have the job description. Not only will it help those of you on the call committee to hone in on interview questions, but it helps the candidate to know how to read the paperwork that's out there, how to read the website, how to read whatever they might have heard about you in the past. So really grateful. I think it's a distinctive job description and someone with some years of experience is going to fit. And you will, the steps are my, I think it's the 17th of August. I'm going to be with the call committee and I hope to walk in that night with a couple of names. And as you heard, we're looking, I think, Jason, you described it well, a second call pastor. Now, if there's a first call pastor, it's because they have extraordinary experience elsewhere. And I'm open to the Spirit lifting up a name, so I hope you would stay open. If there is somebody with 20 years' experience, that's such an ideal match. I hope you'll take a deep breath, call committee, and have the interview. But somebody with that length of experience would only be coming to you because they're such a good fit to who you are in this time and place. So to look at a second call and possibly somebody ready for their third, some people are through two calls in six years or five years. So a second or third call, I think that's a really sweet spot in your, the kind of leadership you need for the place you are and the others on staff that you have. Those names, hopefully, you keep praying and fill that inbox. Some of you have ideas, so get them in.
Formals are in for us.
Get them in. And then hopefully, the interview process can start what we consider yet this summer, while the roads are all closed that summer. And before too long, the right candidate will emerge and you'll be beckoned by your council to come to a congregational meeting. Good? Please.
I know that Easter's looking for two associate pastors. How competitive is the marketplace within the synod right now as far as associates?
Here's the edge that Augustana has. Now, probably everybody from Easter is going to hear me say it. There are two pastors who are leaving, haven't left yet. So you're one lap ahead, your paperwork's in order. You're ready to go. They're just moving into the interim phase. So hopefully, all will go well and you'll be finished. And then they will be coming around the end to start their next lap. There are, it's not, it's not the world it once was on candidates. People are more homebodies than ever. People have purchased property and know the two-square-mile area they'd like to serve in like nothing ever before. So that makes it a little bit more challenging. It really helps Augustana that you are strong. You know who you are. There's a spirit of joy here. You are trying some new things. And I think that is a very, those are the positives you bring. But I wouldn't worry too much about Easter. Easter will worry about themselves. Any other questions for me? I won't necessarily be back to see all of you until it's time to install this new pastor. Call committee, I'll see you, what's that month it's coming? March, no, August. Be good to be back with you. And I'm grateful to be here tonight, hearing your discussion.
Thanks, Drew. Any last questions before we close with a prayer from Mary? And the Rollies didn't even have to leave before we got there.
Pray with me, please. Gracious calling, God, we are grateful to gather in person in this beautiful summer season. We are grateful for seasons, seasons in your creation and seasons in our congregation. We are grateful for your servants in seasons past, lay and clergy who have ministered to Augustana. We are grateful for Pastor Deb, Augustana staff and volunteers who minister with word, prayer, hospitality, community outreach, and caring for this facility in this current season. We ask anew what it means to be the church in our next season. Give us a vision for the seasons of our lives, of our congregation, of new seasons to live out the faith in Jesus. We pray for Bishop Lull, Pastor Jason, the call committee, and the candidates for this position. As we work to call a new pastor, show us our neediness, what we need and what needs doing in our life together in Christ. As we work to call a new pastor, may we welcome the one you are sending to minister to us in our new seasons ahead. And all God's people said.
Amen.